Here.
Kathy Driscoll.
Here.
Leland Zaid. Jim Oliver.
Here.
Crystal Teddy.
Here.
All of them present except Alderman Dorsones. Need a motion to approve the omniscient designation. Motion for Alderman Dorsones. Second, Alderman Bryant. Questions or comments? Minutes of regular meeting held April ninth. Oh, due to voter. Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy. Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Minutes of the regular meeting held April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of the Public Facilities Committee meeting held April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting held April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Motion to approve.
Submit.
Alderman Bryant. Second, Alderman Alden. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Or, sorry, Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, motion to approve and/or ratify payment of bills. Motion Alderman Bud. Second. Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Alderman Bud.
Bills total three hundred thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight, fifty-three.
Roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy. Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Motion to approve the abstracted votes from the April sixth, twenty twenty-one election. Motion by Alderman Dorsones. Second. Alderman Bud. Questions or comments? I have a comment here. The Mayor Ray Bruce Barry thirteen seventy-six. Bill Newberry eight seventeen. Clerk Julie Lilly eighteen sixty. Treasurer Scott Albertson eleven forty-nine. Jackie Nation nine eighty-six. Alderman Ward one. Larry Bud, two eighty-four. James McCoy, one ninety-nine. Alderman Ward two. Jeremy Wilson, two twenty-six. Leland Zaid, two oh-three. Jeffrey Stoner, two one twenty-five. Alderman Ward three. Doug Brown, four hundred fifty-six. Alderman Ward four. Steve Dorsones, four ninety-four. Motion to approve the abstract. Roll call.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
I want to abstain, but I'm not going to. But yes.
Motion carries, motion carries seven to zero. Presentation to Alderman Ernie Dorcheness. If he would stand up, I have a presentation here. Says, presented to Senior Alderman Ernie Dorcheness. In recognition of twenty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Tattletale. Congratulations.
No speech. Limit, limit your comments to three minutes. Or let me be gratuitous.
Presented to Alderman Sean Burdell. In recognition of twelve years of dedicated service to the city of Tattletale. Serving as Alderman Ernie Dorcheness. Congratulations.
I'll say something. I think I've pretty much. And I appreciate everybody's dedication to being on the regular business. I know it's rough. So all the new guys coming in. Literally, it's all guys this time. So all of you guys come in, good luck. And for all of you that are still here and still going to be here after about another fifteen minutes. Good luck with your day.
Thank you. All right, the last presentation. Presented to City Treasurer Jackie Nation. In recognition of fifteen years of dedicated service to the city of Tattletale. With eight years as treasurer. Congratulations.
No, I didn't prepare anything. But thank you, everybody, the superintendents. It's been a pleasure. Staff that are here.
Thank you for your service. Okay, we'll have a short recess and then we'll have an oath of office and remis by Judge Paisley. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Jackie Nation.
Oh, does Ernie want to take his with him?
Yes. Ernie want their.
Do you want your name badge?
Sure. I get all the people. Thank you. My lips are in the lead.
Don't say that, Kelly.
Aw, try anyone here's too. Oh, I got one too. She just.
Sorry.
He's gonna take his.
No, I'll keep him.
Just go where you probably don't go.
You gotta, so we guys go.
Punch your head. Well, I just thought we can just hit the power button and just turn it off for a second.
All right, I'll start with Mayor Barry. If you raise your hand, which he has. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Sean.
Good.
Next, we'll swear in Julie, what is, City Clerk. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Treasurer according to the best of your ability? City Clerk.
I will.
Larry Bud.
I didn't sign up for that.
All right, are we ready? Okay, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman Ward one according to the best of your ability?
Woo!
You said Jeremy Wilson?
So cute.
All right, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman Ward two according to the best of your ability? Next, we have Doug Brown.
Jeremy Wilson.
It's not that easy. Get up.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, it's not that easy.
Starts now.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of this United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman Ward three according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations. Next, we have Steve Dorsones. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Alderman Ward four according to the best of your ability?
Roll call.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Here.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Steve Dorsones.
Here.
Kathy Driscoll.
Here.
Jim Oliver.
Here.
Crystal Teddy.
Here.
Jeremy Wilson.
Here.
All Aldermen are present. Now I need a motion to declare a vacancy in the Office of City Treasurer as of May third, twenty twenty-one. By reason of abandonment of office by the elected City Treasurer, Scott Albertson. Motion Alderman Bryant. Second, Alderman Bud. Roll call.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yeah.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Jeremy Wilson. Doug Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Mayor votes.
Mayor, mayor votes, yes.
Mayor, you gotta vote.
Well, mayor votes, yes. Motion carries nine to zero. We don't have an appointment yet for the City Treasurer, so we'll move on to the appointment of the superintendent. So I need a motion to approve all the superintendents, H R, and water billing manager. Motion to approve, Alderman Driscoll, second. Alderman Alden. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Steve. Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sorry, Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Appointment of the City Attorney. Need a motion to approve. They need to just want to get Judge one's word in all the superintendents. If every, all the superintendents would stand at once with Judge Paisley. While the H R and water billing manager.
All right, if you don't raise your ready hand. Do you each solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Superintendent or Department Head? According to the best of your ability?
Ready to go.
Congratulations.
I'd like to congratulate the superintendents and the department heads. I think it's the finest group we have assembled in a long, long time. Keep up the good work, gentlemen. Motion to approve the appointment of City Attorney Rocky Romano is my choice here. City Attorney, motion Alderman Bud. Second, Alderman Alden. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Steve Dorsones. Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
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 Doug Brown. Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Judge, would you like to give Rocky a zoom?
I will, yeah.
It's very, but you're used to that.
I am, that's all I do. Hey, Rocky, all right. It's raining here, so we're getting a lot of noise. All right, he's got a general hat, but it's good. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Attorney? City Attorney, according to the best of your ability?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rocky. Thank you for your great work. Need a, need a motion to approve the appointment of City Engineer Reggie Benton with Vietnam Associates. Need a motion to approve. Motion Alderman Alden. Second, by Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yeah.
Motion carries eight to zero. Reggie, would you step forward and Judge Paisley? Honors.
Sir, if you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Engineer? According to the best of your ability?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, the committee assignments. All the Aldermen should have got a list of the committee assignments. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Commission and more appointments. You should have got a copy of that. There is a couple of positions that we have not filled yet. We will fill them as soon as we can and I'll get the word approved when we do that also. An ordinance amending section three dash three dash five of chapter three of title three of the Tattletale City Code. Reduce liquor license fees for the poor establishment. This passed council, I believe, April eleventh nineteenth was council. And this passed. Five to two with one extension. And so Rocky has drawn up the ordinance that was in your packet, so we need to approve the ordinance.
Submit.
Motion Alderman Bryant, second. Alderman Dorsones. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy.
No.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
No.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Motion carries five to three. An ordinance amending section six.
Mayor votes.
Okay, the mayor votes, yes, so the motion carries six to three. Ordinance amending six dash three dash nine of chapter three to title six of the Tattletale City Code. Cemetery visitor parking only, so.
Submit.
Motion Alderman Bryant. Second, Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Mayor Barry.
Yes. Motion carries nine to zero. I put it on the order. I thought I put it on all of them. Ordinance. Ordinance amending subparagraph A, C, and F of section eight dash four dash one and subparagraph B one, B two, B three, and B five of section eight dash four dash nine of the Tattletale City Code. Water collection officer, manager, and processing fees. Motion? Alderman Skoltedi, second. Alderman Bud. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jeremy Wilson.
Mayor, yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Mayor Barry.
Yes, Mayor. Motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Tattletale and American Legion Post number seventy-three.
Submit.
Motion Alderman Bryant. Second, Alderman Skoltedi. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Tattletale and Quick Cash Pawn and Jewelry Incorporated and James M. Wrong. Motion to, by Alderman Skoltedi. Second, Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Barry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Tattletale and Lee and Diane Skinner doing business near yesterday year at two oh-four West Market Street. Motion Alderman Bud. Second, Alderman Driscoll. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Mayor Barry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. Resolution, Tyler Technology Software as a Service Agreement.
We're gonna table that.
We need to table that, so motion to table, by Alderman Bryant, second.
Somebody said.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bud. Roll call.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion to table, approve nine to zero. Most, or eight to zero. Motion to approve the request and issue a special events permit for the Black Horse Powwow to be held on June fourth through sixth, twenty twenty-one at Lake Tattletale Marina. Motion by.
Submit.
Alderman Bryant. Second, Alderman Bud. Questions or comments? I believe he's got all the insurance things turned into the clerk's office. Roll call.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yeah.
Crystal Teddy.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yeah.
Motion carries eight to zero. City Attorney update, Rocky.
Yes, I only have one thing to bring up at the city, and that is that the mayor received, I believe, today a letter request from, from a company called Superior Environmental Corporation. Asking for the city to participate and sign on to another highway authority agreement concerning your Casey's General Store there on North Channing Street. Apparently, there was, uh, for, uh, underground gasoline storage tank leak back in old seven, two thousand seven. Uh, now, the, I guess EPA is requiring the city to participate in the remediation process to the extent that we would not allow any habitable, uh, habitable building to be allowed in our right of way, which I don't know why we ever would, uh, there along North Channing. So, uh, we just got it today. Uh, the mayor said to be settled and will probably be on your agenda for the next council meeting for your consideration. So, is there any questions about that? If not, that's, thank you, please, may I report, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mayor, report. Congratulations to the three new Aldermen and to Alderman Bud on his reelection. I look forward to working with you over the next four years. I have made my decision on the committee miss, uh, committee assignments, and you're all given them. I'd like for each Alderman to set up, set aside a half hour per week to meet, to meet with myself and discuss issues either in their ward or issues in the committee that they chair. I can be available as early as seven in the morning and as late as seven in the evening or on Saturday and Sunday mornings. Just let me call and I can meet you up here no matter what time. We owe this to our constituents not only to try to clean up our community, but rebuild our streets, sidewalks, and infrastructures. We are all in this to serve our constituents and to better our community. I look forward to working together with all eight Aldermen. We, as a council, have strived to clean up from the tornado, be safe during the pandemic, and now we will meet future issues head-on with a combined effort. Thank you very much. Committee reports. Discussion and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole and part to matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Public facilities. Alderman Skoltedi.
Don't motion come out with a motion to approve. It's a motion to recommend to the city council. City, the annual maintenance agreement yard eating killing in amount of two thousand five hundred twelve dollars.
Motion Alderman Skoltedi, second. Alderman. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorsones.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Street and sewer committee. Alderman Alden.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to recommend to the city council to approve the fuel bid from Christian County F S as follows. On-road biofuel for the summer is two dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, on-road winter, uh, sixty, two sixty-five. Off-road biodiesel, two nineteen. Off-road biodiesel winter, two twenty-two. Regular unleaded, two dollars and thirty-five cents. I'd put that in the form of a motion.
Motion Alderman Alden, second.
Second.
Alderman Bryant. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Crystal Teddy.
Yeah.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryan.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorcheness.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yeah.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion to come out of committee, a motion to recommend to the city council to approve proposal for Vandiver Internet Engineering in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents to replace two eight-inch gate valves at the Pershing lift station. In the form of motion.
Motion Alderman Allen, Second Alderman Bud. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorcheness.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
Yes.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colletti.
Yes. Motion carries eight to zero.
Last motion to come out of committee, a motion to recommend to the city council to have Ward five reimburse Ward one in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars with all future payments received from the Drainage District to be placed in the Ward five fund. In the form of motion.
Motion Alderman Allen, Second Alderman Bud, questions or comments? Roll call. Alderman Dorcheness.
I'd like to make a motion to table this for more information.
All right, motion on the floor to table it, to have a second to table it.
Second.
Second Alderman Colletti, roll call and table it.
Doug Brown.
Yes.
Megan Bryant.
No.
Larry Bud.
No.
Steve Dorcheness.
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Jim Allen.
No.
Chris Colletti.
Yes.
Jeremy Wilson.
No.
So the vote was five to three, not to table it, so it gets us back to the regular vote, so there was a motion and a second to. To future payments from, or give money from Ward five to Ward one in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, so is there any questions or comments on that particular motion? Seeing none, question? This was a Drainage District area out by Ward one on, by Allstroms. And, uh, we approved it going forward. The tornado head, we had approved it in committee where we were gonna do part of the work ourselves, the other work was gonna be done by the township. Due to the tornado, we did not do it, somebody gave the contractor the permission to do the work. He sent us a bill and we paid it, and we paid it out of Ward one funds. And what Ward one is asking now to them to be reimbursed for this out of the Ward five funds. So that's what the motion is, Mr. Alderman, you gotta comment.
Just to kind of, kind of further that long. It just went long, Ward one had originally, what was the exact amount, I don't know, in thousand dollars. Uh, and then it went to fifteen, we approved, I think fifteen, anyway, we're asking for it because the bill actually come in at sixty thousand dollars. Totally unknown to us that this was ever gonna happen. So we just kind of feel that, uh, we are due back at least forty-five thousand out of that, out of that money that was paid out.
That's my question, how to get sixty thousand?
That's, that's a question we'd like to answer too.
That's basically what the contractor had bid on it and then we thought it was too high, so we agreed with us, we were gonna furnish the equipment, the township was going to furnish the manpower.
And tornado head, of course, the city people and the township people were busy doing this. Sometime back in, uh, two thousand eighteen, the contractor was given the okay to go ahead, I'm not sure, I did not, I don't know who did. And what, and for you guys to just do, what this Ward five is, uh, we developed that when we first came on here, it used to be divided to the two percent money to each ward. And we made a fifth ward in case of emergencies and different cases like that would have to be approved by the council in order to spend money out of the fifth ward. So Ward one, the two Aldermen is the ones that made the motion and the second, they're thinking, they're asking that we approve giving this Ward five money to them to make them more or less whole and so. Alderman Dorcheness.
It's my understanding that this responsibility for this bill belongs to the Drainage District, is that correct?
Yes, I would say the, the, the problem with that, or if I may answer it, they levy taxes of approximately twelve hundred dollars a year. I think they get a dollar per acre, there's around twelve hundred acres in that particular Drainage District. So again, when our, our first meetings, they were unable to pay it, you know, we thought we had an agreement. And so we have been fighting with the Drainage District, they have said they would raise their tax levy. And that's a whole new process, they have to go to court and everything like that. And that's what we're hoping, that they will raise their tax levy or we will eventually be reimbursed through this.
No, I guess my, my comment is if it's not our, the city table's responsibility to pay the bill, why did we pay sixty thousand dollars ahead of that? Somebody needs to answer that.
There is a question. I went to the party late. This is discussed a lot. I have to comment if I could.
Yeah, comment.
This has, Steve, this has been discussed many times about that and that is the crutch of it is, you know, why was it authorized? No one can really get to the bottom of who authorized it. Um, also the property that was worked on was not off city property, that's in a situation, but it wasn't city property, which is my issue with it. Basically, they can't really say who signed off and agreed for this, you can't figure that one out. But still they're out the money and they're wanting to be reimbursed for that move, that's what this kind of goes down to.
All right. Roll call.
Megan Bryant.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Steve Dorcheness.
No.
Kathy Driscoll.
No.
Jim Allen.
Yes.
Chris Colletti.
No.
Jeremy Wilson.
Yes.
Doug Brown.
No.
Motion's four to four, the mayor votes yes, the motion carries five to four. Hey, per subparagraph G of five I L C S one twenty slash two point zero six, this course of the city council means reserved for any person who should address the council on any relevant subject matters concerning the city. The Illinois Open Meeting Act five I L C S one twenty slash one et cetera mandates no action shall be taken on subject matters not listed on the agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the subject matter to a future council and or committee meeting. If anyone wishes to address the council, please provide your name and address, limit your comments or presentation to three minutes, and avoid repetitious comments. Thank you, anyone out there like to speak to the council? Any Alderman or anything, any questions? You got a question, Bud? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
Motion Alderman Bryant, Second Alderman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.